Thank you Father, we're very thankful to you. Thank you very much. Beautiful prayer. Thank you. A motion's adopted in camera. Madam Vice Chair, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In retirements, we have Anne Marie Gallia, Donna Kingsmill, Catherine Ross, and Vesna Juremovic, effective June 30th, 2014. And in rehires of curriculum coordination, curriculum generalist, and special education consultant reappointments, we have Claudia Bowman, Special Education Consultant, Sonia Ellison, Curriculum Coordinator, Karen McCarthy, Special Ed Consultant, Catherine Seraphim, Curriculum Consultant Generalist, and Viviana Verano, Curriculum Consultant Generalist.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Before we do that, I do have two small additions to the agenda under information items. The first one is 10.7, and it is the School Naming Committee update. The School Naming Committee met this morning, and Superintendent Pennelli will just have a verbal update on that for you. And 10.8, just a short update on the Skills Conference to be held on Thursday. On the email I sent out, it said Wednesday, I believe, so I apologize. It is Thursday. So, we'll talk just for a minute about that afterwards. So, those two additions under information, please. And I don't think there's anything else there. So, can I have a mover? Trustee Viviana, seconded by trustee Marai. Any questions for the minutes? The agenda, sorry. All in favor? Thank you. Declarations of conflict of interest, are there any? Thank you. There are no presentations, there are no delegations. Item 6.1, approval of the minutes, the regular board meeting of March 18th. A mover. Trustee Michael, seconded by trustee Lemay. Any questions pertaining to those minutes? No? All in favor? Thank you. Business arising from previous meetings under 7.1. I think there's just one item, the policy on technology. Any questions to that? No? Thank you. There are no action items. 9.1, the French immersion program. Superintendent Negro is going to speak to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I'm pleased to present the staff report in response to the request for more information from the last regular board meeting. Senior staff carefully considered the just-completed process of boundary review in Milton. And, given the extensive nature of the considerations that were made throughout that process and the consultation, from beginning to end, our conclusion really honors the commitment that we made to parents who registered for the early French immersion program in Milton, and honors the commitment we made to them to house the program for the next school year at St. Peter's. But also undertakes an extensive review of French extended and immersion, not only in Milton, but throughout the entire board. And this review, through the creation of a French extended and immersion steering committee, will look at things, including but not limited to, programming, teacher and resource availability, costs associated with different sites, the demand from our communities, and, most importantly, what is best for all students of this board. So, I'm pleased to present the report, and happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions to Superintendent Negro? Trustee Lemay.
This, the comments and the, like, the, this report, has that been emailed or given to the delegation that came?
No.
Were you asked us to bring a report?
Right.
You're bringing it to you first.
Okay, and then, like, will it have to be passed by the board as an action item?
No.
Okay, so, then, then we'll, since we've received it now, then will this go to the delegation? Thank you.
It was sent out with a board package. It went out with a board package on Friday, on the, on the website? I'm sorry, Jane. Did this go out on the website on Friday?
Yes.
With everything else? So, it went out on the website? And it will, this is for trustees' information, and if trustees wish to do anything with it, the conclusion is as outlined. So, if trustees have any questions, or wish to make any recommendations, they are free to do so. See, both.
With this review process, will there, before the report comes to us, will there be a chance for public input, or is that, would that be after we see the recommendations from staff?
That may be built into the process, and likely will, but we'll discuss the type of consultations that will occur in, in that committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was reading this earlier today, and accordingly, this is a pilot program, and you want to do French school on one particular site, am I correct? What about the transportation?
Through you, Madam Chair, that is a significant consideration, and a significant cost item, and would be, and would be part of any of the review of the committee when it's struck. So, that will definitely be looked at and reported on.
Pilots will usually run their course, and then they have an evaluation, same with any form of curriculum, will have an evaluation and recommendations. Trustee?
Just one, one last question. Who will be on this committee?
Are you offering?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, trustee Lemay, because we are looking for trustee representation on the committee, and there will be other, we'll, we'll make the composition of the committee, suggest the composition at a later time, but we are certainly considering parental input, as well as principal, teacher, and trustee input as well. And, yeah.
All stakeholders should be involved, or represented, I should say. So, that would be by November, which isn't that far away. So, and this will go to the delegation, right Danielle? The recommendation, okay? Thank you. Moving right along here. Our next items are information items. The student trustee update, which is trustee Maria.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, we had a very successful gala for our Give Respect, Get Respect campaign. We were blown away by all the fantastic submissions. We would like to thank Ms. Pennelli for all her kind support, as well as Ms. Costello and Mr. Wong. Our senate is in the midst of planning its annual leadership conference, and pin the positivity is underway. Thank you.
Thank you to the trustees who were able to make that session, and the senior staff members who were also there. It was a wonderful, wonderful morning. 10.2, school educational field trips. Superintendent Overholt.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Whoops. Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, the report before you provides you with ten educational school trips that have been approved by the various school superintendents, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions that any trustees may have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question. We have here two schools, Corpus, Saint Dominique's from Opia, and Corpus of Christi. Both of them going to same place, and it's seventy dollars difference. Can, can I have somebody to explain this, please?
Certainly can. Who would like to explain this? Superintendent Pennelli?
There are different activities involved in what they're actually doing on the trip.
So, the same, same days, on the different activities?
They're doing, they're doing different events and different activities once they get there. So, some may be going to a museum, and it will cost more money to get into a museum. It, it depends on the itinerary that they're involved in. They're not identical.
Just to add that, Madam Chair, also, transportation is also a factor that could differentiate between the costs as well, coming from a further distance could add on to the transportation costs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Perhaps, which is not the place for people to ask, but I was interested in the camp crossroads that CTK is going to. What kind of facility is that? I hadn't seen this one before.
Who would like to answer that?
Through you, Madam Chair. Through trustee Ero, I, I would have to find out more details in regards to the actual camp site, but it is one in which, as you can see through the details, one in terms of a leadership opportunities that is provided for the students, but I can get more details in regards to the actual facility for you, and follow up with that.
That, that's fine. I'll ask for myself. That's good. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a general question. As, as I look at these as they come, you know, every meeting, I'm wondering, do we track how many schools take how many trips each year? It, it seems to me that I, I see certain secondary going, feel, it seems to me, on more trips than other secondary, and I don't know whether it's program-driven, or if anybody's ever looked at that, in terms of, what I'm thinking of is, if you have a school who, you know, more teachers want to take the kids on trips, then, then those, those students are exposed to a lot more than perhaps a school that doesn't get the opportunity, or doesn't have the staff that does that, and I'm just wondering, you know, if that's equal for all of our students, for the opportunities to engage in, in the various activities that we do take them on.
Madam Director.
Thank you. Thank you through you, Madam Chair. We can track, because obviously we do keep, but I think it has a lot to do with what the programming is at the school, and the teachers who are seeking out these opportunities for the students to participate. But we could always bring in, just to have a look at, who's going to more places than other, other schools. That's not a problem.
Trustee Michael?
I just want to initially say, I'm not complaining about this, but I have a vested interest in the Notre Dame trips, and it's for outdoor ads. The Luna trip, the two-day one is a prerequisite for Algonquin Park, and Algonquin Park is two hundred, and Luna is one thirty, but that's not what we paid. We paid two seventy. I just want to know what the discrepancy would be. It's good discrepancy, like, my favorite.
Through you, Madam Chair, and trustee Michael, I will double-check, but I believe that that was because, I believe my son is part of that trip as well.
Oh, so we, so we got...
I believe it's incorporating...
So, we've got an overhaul discount.
I, I believe it is incorporating two trips as well, in terms of the cost, because there is a, a further trip later on in the year, that I think they're incorporating both costs, but I will get Superintendent Zupriano to double-check with his family of schools there.
Okay, don't get it raised. Thank you.
Okay, so, that's going to be taken care of, well taken care of. Any other questions on that item? No? All right. 10.3, Halton Poverty Roundtable, Canada Learning Bond Information Section.
Through you, Madam Chair. Our board is committed to equity in practice and living our Catholic social teachings, and I'm very pleased to introduce this item for your information, and perhaps, hopefully for your, for your support in promoting the Canada Learning Bond, which gives low-income families, and about ten percent of Halton families live under the poverty, poverty line, according to the Halton Poverty Roundtable. So, I would ask for your help in promoting this particular program, which gives free money to students and families who qualify, according to the qualification criteria. We're hoping for a hundred percent uptake from our students, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I just have a, a couple of, of questions, like, all the, the three information sessions are all during the day, so you've got all these people, and I would assume that a, a lot of these families, both parents would be working, or they would be single parent families, and, you know, that would be working, so those, those times aren't, aren't the greatest. And is, my sec, my second question is, or comment is that, would this be on the agenda for the council of chairs in May? I don't know, when does this thing have to be in?
April.
Oh, okay, so the council of chairs is no good, so...
No, it's continuous, actually. Enrollment will continue.
Okay.
And this is just the first series of signup sessions.
Right.
We've also, as you've seen in the memo, we have promoted it through school newsletters.
Oh, okay.
And there are other sessions that will be planned. This is only the first series of them.
Okay, thank you.
So, according to Superintendent Negro's answer there, I assume that this is going to address poverty north of Dundas Street as well, eventually? Yes.
Yes, trustee Ero. We'll, we'll make sure there's one, or the Dundas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm wondering, could we speak to the parishes and have this information put into bulletins? Because I think it'd be nice for, you know, sometimes things don't filter down to the, the parents. Also, I know Holy Rosary has a hub, and, and they're already helping people in this situation, so I'm thinking if we had something, if we get something to them at Holy Rosary School, that would also be helpful.
I'm wondering, would we ask the parishes to insert it in their bulletin, which takes time, because it takes a few weeks, and dates are coming up? Or is it better just to have a stack of papers at the back of each church?
I could try to get some more of the posters as well, to put upon the bulletin boards.
Or we could do something that's less expensive and glossy, in our wonderful printing department? Something?
We could do that.
One question I have. So, okay, we've got a child that's, say, in Oakville, who's going to get one of these learning bonds, and if that child moves out of Halton, what happens? It continues?
It's, it's a federal program. It, it does continue.
Okay.
Yes. This is not only based in Halton.
Yes.
But it is the Halton Poverty Roundtable that is promoting it in Halton. It's the agency that's promoting it.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Any other questions on that? No? All right, thank you very much. And we are on to next, the 10.4, April is Aboriginal Educational Awareness Month. Superintendent Negro?
Through you, Madam Chair. Very pleased to talk about Aboriginal Education Awareness Month, and the extensive planning that's gone on in the board through the Aboriginal Education Advisory Committee, and our Aboriginal Education Liaison, Sherry Seville. As a way to introduce this, I'd like to, I prepared a bit of a placemat for you, and if you wouldn't mind just having a look at it, it's eleven by seventeen color placemat. And if you wouldn't mind just starting at the top and the middle, and go counterclockwise, you'll see there our board announcement page, and I want to thank Lisa Stocko and Andreas Lyndon for sending out our press release just a few moments ago. Please keep looking at that page, because we will be adding information, and I already see a possible change on the Ministry of Aboriginal Affairs' presentation on treaties, which will likely happen Friday, April 4th. It's already been corrected, thank you. So, we've had an announcement to the community about this, and if you move to the top left-hand corner, to provide some of the rationale as to why we need to enhance our awareness of Aboriginal education and Aboriginal culture perspectives and issues in this province, in this board, in this country, I've just provided a, an information piece that you may or may not be aware of. The Holghamun proclamation of October seventeen eighty-four actually provided for land for Six Nations and the Mississaugas of the New Credit People, that extended six miles on either side of the Grand River. And so, the outline there that goes pretty much from the lake to, I can't even read what the, what, what the top place there is, but let's say Nob, is it Noble Valley up there? That was all supposed to be Aboriginal land. What was actually granted is the reserve area, Six Nations Reserve, which is in dark, well, light blue, let's say, near the bottom of that map. It was basically about five percent of what was supposed to be going to First Nations peoples. Just below that, there's some interesting stats on Aboriginal peoples in this country, both challenges and celebrations of hope. And in the middle, at the bottom, you'll see some stats from the latest progress report called Sound Foundations, that was published actually in 2013, that shows that there is a real gap in achievement of our Aboriginal students. And on the right-hand side of the page, you'll see, actually, one of the things that will be a focus over the next month is helping our students learn about the residential school experience, and, and one of the activities throughout the month of April is sees our grade ten semester two students in history visiting the residential school on Six Nations. So, I would invite all of you to participate in any of the events that we have planned. We have a very special day happening on April twenty-ninth, where a number of our, our staff will be going to Six Nations and visiting both the residential school, the reserve itself, and actually interacting with Chief Ava Hill of Six Nations, so we would invite you to participate in that day if you can, but you are invited to participate in all of this. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Pressed up, handout, it's really very well done. Any questions or comments on that? Trustee Ero?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, although it may not be the focus of, of the PD Day, of the month, I have a presentation on the history of the native peoples of Halton and Peel County that I do for the Historical Society, and I'd be willing to share that with anyone who wants to listen to history.
We'll sign you up, trustee Ero. Thank you.
Just one question. How many students do we have who are self-identified?
Trustee Lemay, and through you, Madam Chair, we have under forty students self-identified. But I, wait, wait. But we estimate that we have over fifteen hundred and fifty students in the board. And the issue of self-identification is a touchy issue for families. They say in Aboriginal circles that it takes seven generations to heal from, from a tragedy. And so, the lack of trust of Aboriginal families in general precludes them from self-identifying, but we're, we're going to make a, a really concerted attempt over the next month to help Aboriginal families gain our trust, and increase our self-identification numbers.
Through you. To Mr. Jack. On the twenty-ninth, we say, be a group visiting that place?
Sorry, can you repeat that, CBN?
On the twenty-ninth of April?
Yes.
We're leaving from the board?
Some of us will be leaving from the board, so if anyone is in need of transportation to the reserve, we can certainly arrange for that.
Okay, thank you. Another question. I learned when I was at high school, and when I was at the college as well, once, we go on a generation to a generation, that the seven generation, it's clean.
That's right. Yeah, it takes, so there's similar numbers for our Aboriginal peoples. They will say that it takes seven generations to heal.
It, it's still on, seven generations?
Yes, we're, we're, yeah, the last residential school closed in nineteen ninety-six, so that's just about one generation ago, and the, the wounds are very fresh. And one of the people that we'll be hearing from at the residential school museum is a survivor of the residential schools, and if it's the one, I hope we can get, he will have a compelling story to tell all those in attendance. Good.
Thank you. Any other questions on that issue? No? Okay. 10.5, okay. 10.5, school board improvement plan for student achievement and well-being. Math strategy update number three. Superintendent McGillicuddy.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Presented for information is the mathematics strategy update on intermediate math. Our middle years mathematics initiatives and strategies, as identified in our board improvement plan, are based on EQAO data, as well as trends and patterns identified during our school effectiveness visits. And while you will note that the trend in grade nine EQA math... And while you will note that the trend in Grade Nine EQA math achievement is positive, we remain committed to enhancing teaching practices in support of student learning because new cohorts bring new challenges. So, some specific projects we have underway this year include the pilot of an electronic digital resource in Grade Nine Applied Math, and trustees will recall that this resulted in the selection of the McGraw-Hill product for use in all schools beginning next year. Support for teachers to earn an intermediate math additional qualification course, and currently we have sixteen teachers who are enrolled in that program. A collaborative inquiry project at Loyola and Jean-Benier into student motivation and autonomy, which focuses on self-assessment and differentiated instruction. A collaborative inquiry project in the St. Thomas Aquinas Family of Schools investigating effective transitions from elementary to secondary mathematics for students achieving below Level Three. And monitoring of these math initiatives is ongoing during Family of Schools Superintendent visits during Term Two. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize the leadership of Viviana Verrano, our Numeracy Consultant, and the Numeracy Attinérance for their ongoing support of teachers in providing excellent instruction in mathematics. And I welcome questions at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions on math? Trustee Row, Madam Vice Chair.
Another question, just congratulations on setting up, between the board and the ministry, an excellent collection of resources and ways of addressing this problem. Because we've been talking about it for decades, and very little's been done. So, it's really good.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering, the sixteen teachers that we have enrolled, are there two per school? Is there one per school? Are there, you know, four for one school, nine for another school? Do we know what the distribution is?
I could get that information for you. It wasn't designed in such a way that it was intentionally distributed throughout the board, it was invitational, the teachers who would be, who'd have an interest in doing, in taking it.
I'd like to know that whatever information or whatever program we're rolling out, all the schools have teachers that are there that are sort of up to snuff on everything so that there isn't a secondary that gets left behind? Because I know there have been issues with some students moving over to post-secondary, and there's inconsistencies within the board. Thank you.
Sorry, Madam Chair, this is, I don't whistle that well. Okay. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Despite the fact that the Ontario budget has yet to be approved, the ministry has released the grant for student needs for the upcoming year, the 2014-15 fiscal year. Typically, the reverse happens, the Ontario budget comes forward and then the GSN. This is the second year it's been like this. However, the Ministry of Education has said that they are given a one percent increase from Treasury, from the Ministry of Finance, and that's how they proceeded. And Roxanna and I have verified that calculation. If you take out the enrollment increase that is included in the numbers, province-wide, it is in fact about a one percent increase in the grants. So, typically, we bring this report forward at either the first board meeting in May, if we only have one in April, or last year we brought it forward in April 16th because we were able to compile the information. So, we've done a bit of a hurry-up pattern here to bring every piece of information we could forward to you, including adding Appendix H, which just came to us midday yesterday, I believe. So, what I've tried to, what we've tried to do in the report is explain the increase in the grants from the projection that the ministry has provided. And I have to emphasize and caution that it is a ministry projection right now, it is not a calculation undertaken by us. A quick sidebar on that, the ministry, we use the ministry's Education Finance Information System, you've heard me speak of that before, EPHIS as it's called. And the ministry is in the process of converting to EPHIS 2.0. And our finance, the four of us finance staff have gone to training on that. The forms for that are likely not to come out until the end of April. The slide deck says mid-April, we hope it is, but given the transition from EPHIS 1.0 to 2.0, and it's quite different, we, it may be more towards the end of April before we can actually do a calculation which would improve on the projection. I don't mean improve more dollars, it would be a more solid foundation on the calculation of the revenues for our board, the grant revenues. So, that being said, at the top of Page Two, or the second page of the report, we've tried to show, it looks like a lot of money, eleven percent, thirty-one million dollar increase when you look over compared to the revised estimate. But the first item to note is that full-day kindergarten, which formerly was an EPO, Education Program Other, a grant outside the GSN, is now folded into the GSN. So, when you look at the numbers, that was twelve million, almost thirteen million for us last year. So, the eleven percent comes quickly down to six point five. Now, that is incorporating last year's thirteen, fourteen numbers for EPO. And as trustees know, this year, thirteen, fourteen, we still have ten schools in our system that are, still have half-day kindergarten. So, they will become on-stream in the fourteen, fifteen year, the year we're talking about here. So, if you look at the first item below that, eighteen million dollar, six point five percent number, it's five million for the ten remaining schools to bring the, and again, these are numbers that we've used from estimated enrollment projections. But that's the first, that pertains to FDK. The second one, the Teacher Q&amp;E Grant, which looks like it's gone up by a lot, and it has, there's two component, well, three components, if you will, in that. There's additional teachers for the FDK for the other half-day. There's early childhood educators are now going to be included in that, as well as normal increases in enrollment, so we would have more, require more teachers to teach, to teach those students. We're still a growing board, at least by a few hundred students a year. We're happy to hear that they have at least announced it here, it's going to be phased in over time, but an increase in the special ed numbers. And again, a portion of that three point two million that's there, we're not sure right now with the numbers, but it would likely be attributed to FDK and augment the one point one million from thirteen, fourteen that's shown up above there. So, we've listed the other items in here too, including there's a report on the Board Administration and Governance Grant, they've released their report. We're comparing, again, by that five hundred and eleven thousand dollar number, the ministry projection to what our thirteen, fourteen revised estimates are. And so, that's our best take on what the increase would be. Again, I repeat, we have to do these calculations with the EPHIS forms, and the two paragraphs below the numbers there, that's what we're stating there. So, and so, we've got, it goes down to about point three percent, and even that's explainable because there's labor enhancements that we didn't list in here, and we're not a hundred percent certain of what the numbers will be from our board until we get the actual EPHIS forms. So, basically, you know, while it looks like a lot of money, it's explainable, and all those increases there will, in our estimation right now, are expected to equal, or our expenditures will be expected to equal or exceed those numbers that are there. And I use, I can use one example there, the increase in school operation allocation, which is for the maintenance and the custodial and utility consumption in our schools, that's gone up by two million in the grant. It includes seven, I think, two percent, Roxanna, for gas and other commodities, and seven point three percent for electricity. You know, it doesn't include waters, Mr. Cabacho has told me, water goes up by ten percent a year, and gas is going up, we don't know right now, but it could be as much as in the thirty to forty percent range. So, the numbers, that grant won't cover those increases. So, even if some of these items on here look like they might be, you know, good news in the sense, you know, that you could say the special ed number might help us with our special ed shortfall, or the Boardman Governance Grant could help us with our shortfall on that, there's other, there are other areas where we're not sure exactly what the costs are. And as the, as the, as the paragraph below the chart says, it should say staffer in the process of compiling the salary and non-salary expenditures, which is exactly what we're doing in conjunction with senior staff, putting the expenditure side. So, again, together, this is the revenue side only, we need those forms to calculate the actual revenues that will accrue to the board. We did add on Appendix F, which was a further update from the OCSTA Finance Update. And as I mentioned, the Appendix H, which is the results of the consultation under the School Board and efficiencies modernization consultation strategy that the ministry adopted, and that I've mentioned in previous board meetings. So, that's a quick overview. I know there's a lot of information there, we wanted to give it to you so that you have it. If you don't read anything, you may want to go through the slides. I know Diane and I believe Paul were at the webcast, that is a good document. It's basically, the rest of the documents are really summarized in those, and I'd be happy to answer any questions trustees may have, along with Roxanna and other members of senior staff, Madam Chair. Thank you.
I can believe my eyes, believe me. If this is really true, I...
Through you, Madam Chair. As I said in my comments, it is true, these are the numbers that the ministry has published for our board, but there are reasons for each one of them, and they will be offset in all likelihood by corresponding expenditures. And the numbers will have to be trued up, if you will, by our EPHIS forms, the Education Finance Information Calculations. One grant, the Q&amp;E Grant as an example, we see swings in that each year from what the projection is to what we actually calculate, and then the revised estimates too. So, we're trying to further nail down these numbers. And again, as we get more information, we will bring that forward to trustees. We do have the session, as trustees will recall, with the group on April 22nd. And depending on when we receive those EPHIS forms, if we do get them mid-April, we'll do everything we can to have some revised numbers, at least some of them, for that meeting. If they come out the end of April, we won't be able to make it, but we can still bring forward whatever additional information we've received at that time, or additional calculations, and hopefully, we'll be able to bring some pieces of the expenditure side into the equation too, to start comparing our revenue and expenditures, at least at the high level, to see what our ultimate budget position will be. So, you know, these need to be taken, through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Diane, these numbers need to be taken with a grain of salt, if you will, to, because they're, they're, there's costs that these revenues will cover, hopefully, and perhaps more. So, and again, you know, the big part of it is that full-day kindergarten is now within the GSN. So, if you look at the, I believe it's Appendix E, which is the projection, that document, you'll see that the ministry has actually taken the FDK EPO, the Full-Day Kindergarten Education Program Other number amount, and added it to thirteen, fourteen, to make it comparable to fourteen, fifteen, to put them on the same, on the same playing field, if you will.
Please, a note, if you don't already have it in your calendar, we played around with the date a little bit, trying to get everyone, April twenty-seven, twenty-second, two-two, April 22nd from six to eight, we have the budget meeting. I haven't heard back from every trustee, we do have a quorum, but I'd really like it if everyone could attend to your comments and your questions.
Twenty-second?
Twenty-second, it's a Tuesday.
Right. And then six o'clock, yeah?
We had it five to seven, and that was difficult for people, so no difference.
Five o'clock, everybody, but...
It's six to eight, we moved it an hour back because people cannot make five o'clock. It's just too early for those that have to work.
Don't care with me.
Good, I'm glad, that we can all hopefully get there. Okay? We're good? All right, so, thank you very much. Any questions for Superintendent McMahon, trustee Marais?
After you, Madam Chair. Just a comment and a question. My comment was going to be about the seven point three percent, I guess, electricity rate rise, and how, you mentioned, actually, you brought it up before, the fact that it probably won't cover. So, are you suggesting, you know, one of the, one of the good news stories, it seemed the day that the announcement came out, was improvements to special ed funding at the board. But the fact is, we already spend more than is provided. So, what you're suggesting is that they're increasing other areas, but not enough for increases that they know are coming, which will even out this, in effect, make it a level playing field.
Through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Marais, yes, that's correct. That's what I was trying to say. Basically, you know, if you said, okay, the three-point, currently we have about a two point seven to three million dollar shortfall in special ed funding, so if you say the three point two covers, will cover that shortfall there. Currently, we're funding that shortfall from elsewhere in the budget, but there's cost pressures like on the utilities, like you just mentioned, that may be more, and likely will be more, than the two million dollar line. So, we're hoping it will all come out, you know, hopefully, one will offset the other. But we don't know until we put our full expenditure budget together.
Just one point of clarification, just, and these items that are announced are kind of enveloped, and that's why we need to pull it from areas that we've moved around in the past to...
Through you, Madam Chair. Certain items are enveloped, and it isn't with this report, we do put it forward with our final budget report. Special ed is one that is enveloped. So, if, sorry, so I hear what trustee Marais, what he means by that. So, you're right, if we were, if for some reason we were over in special ed, it is enveloped. But what I said earlier was, I think, we think that part of that three point two is going to be attributed to full-day kindergarten special ed. So, because the one point one million, one one eight one number above there is the thirteen, fourteen number, when we bring on those other ten schools, that number will likely have to be enhanced. And I don't know if Brendan wanted to comment, we're not sure exactly where that's going to land, but with more students in full-day kindergarten, the need for educational assistance or other special ed supports would likely be there when we add, when we have all of our students in full-day kindergarten.
Trustee Marais, I mean, Superintendent McMahon explained it well, and when we think about our funding, we look at, to this point, we've been, you know, when students have required support, say, through educational assistance, it could also require other services as well. That's been on a half-time basis, as we've been, you know, JK and SK have been AM and PM. So, the full-day kindergarten brings with it essentially the doubling of our expenditures in spec ed for each new system we've brought on. So, in the past, where our expenditures were based on, you would have two classes of twenty, a morning class and an afternoon class. Now, you have two different classes of forty that are there all day, so we're essentially doubling our costs.
As for policy, we follow and began our process in naming...
As for policy, we follow and began our process in naming both Milton 5 and Milton 7 today. A committee was brought together that included our chair and trustee for Milton in where the schools are located, along with our director. Both parishes had representatives, Holy Rosary and St. Benedict, plus the two principals and myself. And we met this morning to kind of review the board policy and process as we. We explored and discussed the opportunity of about 15 names. And we narrowed it down to four names that will be sent out to both different school communities. What we concluded and with a consensus that was that one of the names would be unique to that particular school. So in the case of Milton 5, the name that will be offered to the school community will be St. Benedict, which was felt that that would be the closest school to the parish. So St. Benedict will be part of the offering that the parents will choose for Milton 5. At the same time, Milton 7 was going to be offered Queen of Heaven, which would be attached to the parish of Holy Rosary. As for the other three names, they're going to be identical for both school communities with the caveat that the school that votes, so let's say both schools pick one of the other three names, the one that has the largest percentage will get that name, and then the other school will go to the second name. So the other three names that are going to be offered are going to be Good Shepherd, our St. Teresa of La Vie, and Saint, Catria, Catere, Catary. And this is the one that we keep putting back out repeatedly. And we'll see how the communities respond to this. We're in the process, so that was just decided today. We are in the process right now of moving forward in how this is going to be sent out to the community for the parents and to choose which name they would prefer for their school. And then that will be coming back. The deadline for us for the voting and so forth is going to be the end of April so that we would be able to bring back to the board, first board meeting in May, the final conclusion of what the school communities have chosen as their name. Any questions at this point in time?
Trustee Lemay?
Were the students asked at all to submit names?
No, that is, there's a policy pertaining to this, a policy or procedure, I can't remember.
It's a policy.
Policy. And there is a format that goes through. So at this point in time, it was the number of people, as outlined by Superintendent Pennelli. Now it goes to the families, and the students can participate in their family's input, with their family's decision.
But I thought in the past that when these names went to the school, that they could then submit names of their own choosing as well.
It would be in accord, I'll be with you in a minute. It will be in accordance with that particular policy. And in the past, the past for some of us has been very long. So it may have done, we may have done it way back when.
I'll have to go back and look at it because that's not what we've done.
The policy is what we're following, the policy that was approved by this board. And it's the same policy that we followed for Jean Vanier, for Lumen Christie, for St. Anne's, and a few more, St. Mary's. It seems to work well. So the students do get input. They have a list of a few names. If we go out and just say, "Give us your names," we'll have so many names. So we have to have some sort of organization. And that was the policy that was approved by this board. If we wish to change the policy, then that's another thing that we'll bring to trustee Morrison, who's listening carefully. All right, trustee Vienna?
Through you, Madam. To our speaker, can we have the history of that names, of the saints? Be forward, the history of the, of the names? Yes, please.
Again, okay. Number 5 will be given St. Benedict.
Hold on. I would like to have this and write the history of that names. Yeah.
Of course they will get that. Yes.
Please, thank you.
Once we have that, we will. Out to the schools, when it goes out to the parent community, the parents also get a summary of each saint. And so that will be available, probably available. Any other questions pertaining to that? No, okay, thank you. The next item, and it's a very short item, 10.8 is the Skills Conference. That's the Halton Skills Competition. Both school boards in Halton have a celebration of the technological skills of our Halton students. Last year, it was held at CTK, and it was excellent. This year, it's being held at MM Robinson, just north of, at the northwest corner of Upper Middle and Walthline. And so the activities started from 9:00 to 3:00. Dinner and entertainment is from 3:30 to 5:30. And the award ceremony is at 5:30. Now, if you had previously requested a parking pass, then you may have this. If you requested one and you haven't got it, it might be in your mailbox over near Danielle's office. So we can check into that in the next day or so. But there is also parking. Sure. And there's also parking, I believe, available across the road. There's a mall there, so if you're doing some shopping at the same time, it will work out well. And in the weekly memo that I sent out to you, I made an error. I had listed it as being April 2nd, Wednesday, April 2nd. My apologies, it's actually April 3rd, Thursday, April 3rd. Any questions pertaining to that? Yes, apologize.
Sorry, through you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to share that there are 75 of our students competing. So we're very excited about that.
You have in your package the CPIC minutes of February 10th. Superintendent Overholz is going to answer any questions, or speak to it, or do something.
Through you, Madam Chair. Just one item I wouldn't mind highlighting. In May, at end of May, the annual Ontario Association of Parents Catholic Education Conference is taking place. Many of our CPIC members and parents at large will be attending. Part of the conference is presenting awards to parents who have been very involved and active in Catholic education. And we have many of our parents who are in their communities, in our school board, doing many great things for Catholic education. I want to, we hope that many of our parents do get nominated. It was sent out to our Catholic School Councils so that communities would be aware of that. I would like to bring the attention of one, I know one nomination that's going forward from our CPIC council, Lisa Koster. She's in her last year here on our committee. Her last child is graduating from school. And we have nominated her, many of the members on the board. So we hope Lisa does receive something, and many of our other parents who hopefully get nominated as well. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Any questions on that? No, okay, thank you. Respondents, you have in your package a letter from John Garrettson, the Attorney General pertaining to Bill 69. It is a response to the letter that we sent out along with a number of other school boards pertaining to the Construction Lean Act. So that's there, the open question period. We have our two questions, and I will read them to you. Came from one of our parents who have very kindly joined us this evening. The first question, they are related. First question, it all pertains to French immersion. How and when are parents selected for the French Immersion Committee? A particular concern of ours as the decision to split the current EFI program at St. Peter's included no parent input. And I will repeat that question again, and then we can have a response. How and when are parents selected for the FI Committee? A particular concern of ours as the decision to split the current EFI program at St. Peter's included no parent input.
Through you, Madam Chair. We will release details of the committee and the composition of the committee and the selection of people on the committee in the coming weeks.
At what step in the process will parents be involved? We would like to be part of decisions not approving predetermined options. And I'll repeat that. At what step in the process will parents be involved? We would like to be part of decisions not approving predetermined options.
Through you, Madam Chair. Input in any decision of this nature comes to the advice of the board and senior team for this particular issue. And in deliberating over all of the input, we make decisions that will, we believe will be in the best interest of all students of the board, and in a manner that is sustainable for the program's continuity in our board. So we will consider all good advice, and then weigh all of the advice, and then make decisions that are in the best interests of our students.
Provide us with the closing prayer.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. A student's prayer. Creator of all things, true source of light and wisdom, lofty source of all being, graciously let a ray of your brilliance penetrate into the darkness of our understanding and take from me the double darkness in which I have been born, sin and ignorance. Give me a sharp sense of understanding, a retentive memory, and the ability to grasp things correctly and fundamentally. Grant me the talent of being exact in my explanations and the ability to express myself with thoroughness and charm. Point out the beginning, direct the progress, help in the completion through Christ our Lord. Amen. St. Thomas Aquinas, pray for us.
Thank you very much, and have a safe trip home, thank you.